Luck is at 6:30. So, let's open the January 23 meeting of the Towns Rutland Planning Board. I suppose. I'm starting to think a little bit like Peter Crane. He always goes through who's present.
Yes, yes, we all are present. We're not past Jan. You know the week.
So, present in the room, we have me, Tim Darwell, Nick Williamson, Keith Suttle, Britton Bradford.
Bradford.
Yes, sir. John Charbonneau, Town Planner, and myself, Norm Anderson.
And no guests.
And no guests, at least not yet.
We got, behind you, you got Leah and Tamika.
Okay, cool, that's right. Remotely, Tamika, Murphy.
Excellent, so, I was gonna say, I didn't see you up there first, I'm like, crap, who's gonna take minute notes? Because I have doctor's writing. I can make you a hell of a prescription. And your guys have over there have already signed. Yeah, Fred's already taken a few of those, he just doesn't know it.
Okay, first thing we have is minutes for January 9.
Dot, I didn't have anything when Dot was here, that was good.
I have motion to accept January 9 minutes.
Second. Very thorough.
Even though I might have red markings on here. Is there any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, special permit, five medicine hours.
Norm, it's Tamika. I'm sorry to interrupt, um, Britton will have to abstain because he wasn't here last time.
Correct, okay. It was 01.
01.
Okay, special permit decision, which we have in front of us.
Yes, so, obviously, Britton will not be signing this decision because he did not vote on that project.
The other thing, just popped in my mind again, have we sent off a new filing record to the registry?
A new filing record?
Mm-hmm.
With our signatures.
Signatures. Uh, Tamika has, has, does the registry, I know I have something in my file at the office, when's the last time, I know you talked about that, getting Britton's signature for the registry?
Yes, the last time it was updated, I did it this past July, so it's gonna have to be redone with Britton's signature out there, but everybody else that's gonna sign tonight is all set.
So, we should probably put that on the agenda for the 13th, to do all the signatures to get it.
Yeah.
To make it.
Have to be a whole, a complete form filled out.
Yeah, yeah, because we gotta do two, if I remember right.
Yep, you have to do one for, like, subdivisions and one for ANRs, I think it is.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yep.
So, um, if I can go through the decision quickly?
Yep.
So, I mean, it's very basic, this was not anything out of the ordinary for an accessory dwelling unit, um, the front page is, is the title, the date, today's date, with the project summary and procedural history, uh, when the application was submitted, and the public hearing was held, and it was closed on January 9th, then the list of application materials, and then the various findings, um, on the applicant, the lot, and also the zoning district, um, the fact that the lot's located in a neighborhood that consists of single-family residential uses, and then the various review criteria according to our subdivision rules and regs relative to accessory dwelling units. This is identical to the way they were listed in previous decisions, um, basically, I just kept the same format and just made comments that were relative to, um, this project, um, proposal's not expected to have an adverse effect with respect to the criteria, the proposed addition will be built in accordance with the Massachusetts Building Code, which requires adequate light and air. So, I'm not gonna go through every single criteria.
No, it's just basically off of the existing bylaw.
Then I'll just go through the conditions quickly, which are very standard, um, the accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed in substantial performance with, and as shown on the plot plan submitted July, dated July 21st, 2005, and amended through December 7th, 2023, consisting of one sheet, elevation plans and floor plans, applicant shall obtain all local permits required for the construction occupancy of the ADU, there shall be no more than one accessory dwelling unit on a lot, the owner of the single-family dwelling with which the accessory dwelling units associated shall occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the lot, and they must occupy it full-time for a minimum of six months over a 12-month period, they must obtain a certificate of occupancy from the building department prior to use or occupation, short-term rental or related principal is prohibited, the owner shall record the special permit with the registry of deeds, and when a structure which has received a special permit is sold, the owner, if they wish to continue the permit, must within 30 days of the sale submit documentation to the town planner and building commissioner, stating that they will occupy one of the dwelling units on the premises as required. And then it's simply the motion that was made by Tim, seconded by Dick, 400, motion by Keith, seconded by Dick, 400, and then just the signature page.
Yeah.
We don't have to do anything with this because we've already.
Yep, you just have to endorse the.
Yep.
I have a clean copy of the last page that will go to the clerk's office tomorrow.
The only other thing that probably is not necessary, but I know Dave George usually put down the individual votes, each one of our names.
Oh.
Yes, yes, yes.
In a table? I could, I could add that.
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
It's not necessary, but if it's a board preference, I can certainly add that to the next to last page if you'd like.
Me too. We'll just do it on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't wanna change this one.
I have, I have done it for boards in the past, some want, some want the little table, some don't.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
There's a particular reason for it, I'm sure it's not a law.
Well, sometimes they'll do that in the case of a special permit where it's a roll-call vote. And that's why they'll have the table to show each member said yea or nay.
Yeah.
So, maybe when it's, I think when it's a roll-call vote.
I don't think it's a bad idea for the special permit.
No, it's not.
In this case, I would say, let's just sign it, and we'll catch it on the next round.
I can do it for all the decisions, it's not a big deal, guys, if you want to.
All right.
Okay.
Where I've seen it is what's, if somebody's adamantly against the project.
And they want it, they want it to show, yeah. Yeah, sometimes they want their vote, no, they're against something, because.
Okay, are we signing blue or black? I just, I got, I got four.
I've got black.
All right. They still make those pens?
I dig them.
Yeah, they do, baby. You know what?
Every color. Attaboy.
He keeps in his trapper keeper.
Anytime I run across, and they're made in France, so look, look at the white portion, we surrender. That was on camera, so I really don't care. I had a friend that was an F-111.
It's not inaccurate.
Pilot that was lost because of France, so, I'm a little bit irritable with that country still. Germans, we hold a long. Let's miss you, it was way back there. We'll leave it there. Actually, had to do with Gaddafi, and how many decades ago was that?
And please, my middle name, Richard, no, it's R., Charles R. Williams, because of what happened a long time ago, we had to sign, what, like, 38?
Oh, yeah.
And after that.
It's tired.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Just to let you know, it's.
Yep.
Well, that'll be on the, next, on the 13th, when we sign our.
Signatures.
Signatures.
So, tomorrow, this will get filed with the clerk, and a notice of decision will be prepared, and I'll send those out to the abutters here in the next few days, has to be done within 14 days. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next agenda item, master plan.
So.
Sorry.
No, no, this is, this is, it's, it's perfectly fine, um, Tim got me a thumb drive with his comments on Dick's mock-up copy this morning, so I appreciate that, that being said, obviously, um, the boy hasn't had a chance to see the comments, so, um, what I would, what I would recommend, if the board's amenable to this, is since the main comments came from Dick, and Tim and I reviewed them, and went through them, and collated them, if the, if the board's amenable to this, could Tim, Dick, and myself meet in my office at some point in the next week or so, to simply go, go through Dick's comments, and Tim's comments, and my comments, and basically collate them, and organize them, and present them to the board at the, at the next meeting, whenever they're ready?
You know, I, I don't have a problem with that, um, I guess the only thing I'm kinda thinking is there something that really stands out, that would be worthy of a discussion tonight.
Um, I'll leave that, I'll, I'll leave that to Tim, there's only, there's only a couple things that really, I mean, I, I don't have anything that I think I would need to discuss and go back and forth, there's definitely some really good comments from Dick in here, um, you know, I think one of the things you mentioned, and I forget the intersection, Dick, I apologize, you mentioned it when you came into town hall the other day, about the site distance and the, and the safety, what intersection was that?
122. And.
Pleasant Dale.
Yes, it is.
Pleasant Dale.
There you go, so, um, that's the type of comments that I, you know, that I'm really interested in, a lot of, a lot of the comments that Dick made were informational corrections and things like that, but there was some, I think, in the implementation section, I, there were a few comments that I think are worthwhile to, to definitely be changed and substantial.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the comments were, were editorial in nature, um, so, yeah, and as far as the body of the document, I'll, I'll take the recommendation of the, of the planning consultant, Richard Harris, that in terms of comments within the, the body of the main document, those are things that I can work with CMRPC to implement.
After I give it to Janet.
Yeah, I know you've been talking to Janet. So, um, so then, um, what that leaves is the, the implementation, like I said when we previously discussed this, the implementation and executive summary are really the meat of what this document is about in terms of implementation, action items going forward, the rest of it is, is largely informational, so, that's, that's why the focus would be on.
I'm trying to keep my cool.
No, no, Norm.
No, don't.
Most of, a lot of the comments, because I went through every freaking one of them, I had a lot of agreement on Dick, there was a lot of comments in here that he caught that I like, I just put next to it, agree, agree, yes, needs to be done, needs, I mean, I made some comments like on, I don't know, on training and stuff like that for the town, I mean, um, and, you know, some things that, you know, should be handled by the planner, not by the recommendation of what CMRPC said, so I don't have any earth shakers in here, it's more of adders to what Dick made, or, or addendums to his comments, so, I think this meeting would, would clarify all of these, and again, I just went through the last 19 pages.
Yeah.
And then the implementation portion, and made comments to that, I didn't, because when I started flipping through the big document, the. How do I say this? I was a little disappointed in all the grammatical and, and, um, I'll just stick with grammatical mistakes that was done in there, and, um, just, if I was my English teacher from high school, there'd be a serious discussion on the side afterwards. Say the least.
Like I said, for the sake, there's a lot of time, money, and effort has gone into this document, it's important that this get adopted, so, we're not without an active master plan for, so, again, for the sake of getting this adopted, you know, I don't wanna spend too much time on grammatical things and everything, I wanna, I wanna look at the implementation, because that's the important thing, because at the end of the day.
The meat is right here.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I, I agree on that.
And this meat can be.
How you get to it, that bothers me, and I don't want other entities to grab this, and then, hey, look what they wrote, let's use that.
I think, once we get the meat taken care of, Dick, that it wouldn't, it would behoove CMRPC to take this meat and go back and, and fix their big section, that's not our responsibility, that's what they should be doing, if Jan doesn't agree to that, I'm, I'm gonna have a tough time, because then, we, as a planning board, spent the time going over, I'll call it the executive summary, because it's been said before, and that executive summary was actually taken from that, let's just say, a couple hundred pages, so I would, my expectation is, once we got this cleaned up, you can easily back that into those sections and clean them up.
That's, that's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I think that's a good way to handle, and then you'd have a complete document, that, to Dick's point, take off the shelf, this executive summary matches the meat, so, if somebody wants to read 200 pages, give them the power.
Right, but this is what I'm gonna use, and the planning board's gonna use in terms of going forward.
Oh.
In, in other words, how do we get there, you know, what zoning bylaw amendments do we have to work on, what changes to our subdivision rules and regs do we have to work on, things like that, so, that's, that's really, that's really mine and the board's.
Not just for the planning board.
No, there are other entities involved, but I can only speak for myself and the planning board.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I had historical commission, TA, select board, rec, I mean, there was a whole bunch in there that all were part of the, uh.
Yes.
You know, even the DPW is in there.
It's, it's a town-wide.
I made a ton of comments that our good buddy Joe, who is now at, at Amesbury, spent a good portion of, of very valuable money to get reports that this town can use for highway, I shouldn't say highway, road cleanups, long-term planning for how to get prioritized, what needs, what needs to be fixed, I mean, he did a phenomenal job that way, sewers that need, so, some of that stuff in there, mentioning to do that, that's where I had my tough comments, like, we're not gonna waste money redoing something that's already done, that Joe spent his time and effort as an engineer and PE getting it done with StanTech and, and forward, so, again, that's stuff that three of us could go over and quantify and clarify.
Well, the question is, either three of you all agreed to doing that?
As long as I can make it on Thursday.
I don't know how much time it's gonna take, but I wanna do it, but there again, I don't wanna stall other things I got going on.
Would this be before 5 o'clock or after 5?
Well, I would hope it would be, I would want it to be during the day, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't do this at night, that's why, Dick, I was mentioning to John, Thursday afternoons are good for me, because I can, I can break away, because I can put extra hours in the week, and then have a Thursday, you know, like, from noon to 5, or something like that, or noon to 4.
I, I would hope with the agreement that exists between Tim and Dick, that we could roll through this with, with, within an hour or two, because if, if they're in agreement, then it's just for me to say, okay, let, let's, let's change that, you know?
My, my only thing is that the three of you all agreed to do it.
Oh, I definitely do, I, I want, because I think.
Long as it doesn't fall on the, the last Thursday of the month, which is what's coming up, yes, because.
So, that's okay, I mean, if we have to do it the first Thursday in February, let's do it the first Thursday in February, so.
That would be better for me.
Okay, then let's look at that. Yep.
You know what, I may not be able to make it to that meeting, even though it's really strong focus of you guys, but if I could come by and get a copy, or just.
Oh, absolutely.
Read them, just to get an idea of what you guys.
I'd love to email it, but it's, it was 23.
Yeah, don't worry. Because what you did, because what you did was, you basically took his PDF, his, a copy of his, wrote it, and then took a picture, which made it a PDF.
Yeah.
Instead of a Word document, and that's, and that's what made, that's what bumped the memory up.
Yeah, as long as.
Yeah, I did, I, I did a PDF, because I wanted to, um, my scanner does color, so I scanned it in in color, because that way you can see, mine are green, his are red.
Yeah.
So, and what I'll do is, I'll be happy to come up with a list of all, of every single change, bullet items of what's, of what's being changed from what to what.
Yeah.
And again, respecting that this has already been through a process, this isn't gonna be things that are gonna change the tone of the document, it's just getting it to a point where it's accurate.
True.
So, that's, that's the big thing, is accuracy.
Yeah.
Because these gentlemen have the local knowledge of the town that I don't have.
Actually, those two do, I'm just, I'm coattailing it. I haven't been here long enough.
Yeah, 20 years.
So, we don't have to take a vote on that, as long as the board is amenable to that, we can, we can set that up. Okay, excellent, thank you, and my hope is to have this done, hopefully by the end of February, have it ready for the board to vote on, to accept.
We better.
Hey, Norm, it's Tamika, I apologize for interrupting, I just realized, usually the board makes a motion to sign decisions, and you guys didn't do that for the Madison Ave.
We already did.
Well, they took a vote at the, oh, did you take a separate vote to sign it?
Usually take a vote, separate vote to sign it.
I thought we did.
No.
Oh, yeah, I guess we didn't do that, we closed the hearing and voted to grant the special permit.
Yep.
And authorized me to prepare a decision.
Yeah, ah, okay, I guess we go back and I'll make a motion to authorize the board to sign these special permit.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second, yeah.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna say, we should use black pens.
Thank you, so, master plan's all set?
I think so.
Madison Avenue is all set.
Oh, and, and, wait till we get to Bryce Estates, because I didn't send you anything, because I had more than enough text messages that, when I mentioned the pothole, it was like, I didn't have, I didn't have to send you anything, because Tom Larson got involved, the, the DP, Chris got involved, so that's why, John, I didn't send you anything, because it was fixed before I could even send you anything. So, that was Bryce, and I haven't been through to look at it, but I understand it's been, that, I called it the Cadillac Killer, has been fixed.
Okay, okay. So, we do have a, an update, it's not really a regular construction, according to our, from Quinn Engineering, on our various subdivisions, um, and basically, as far as roadway construction and that sort of thing, nothing is happening, so, that's pretty much what he's saying.
Oh, where the heck is it? It's right at the end of the packet.
Yeah, it's, it's got memorandum on it, that one right there.
Grizzly Drive roadway, complete the binder, individual lots are rough graded, subdivision construction not underway currently.
Yeah. They're not doing anything, they're building houses, but they're not doing anything on the road.
Yeah. Subdivision construction, to me, is the housing.
Nope, he, he's talking about the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Which is, that's why I asked about all those blocks that were sitting on the side, and now I know what those are.
I know, yes.
Those are, those are gonna be added down the road, I guess.
Next layer.
Yeah, because I couldn't figure out, those, those look expensive, where the hell are they sitting there?
He does not look at.
I know, but interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, I can kind of see that.
That's why I blew up, because that's one of the reasons why, when I talked to Cle, what I wanted while his man was there digging holes, and the excavator might be stalled for an hour or two, why not have the gentleman, you know, go out and make that trail connection while, you know?
Oh, over to.
Over to the rail trail.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, would you, would you like me to mention to Quinn Engineering to ask him to be a little bit more specific in his language on these reports, or? My move.
When construction is actually underway, he is very, he is very specific.
Okay.
I think this is just sort of a catch-up report for us, because he hasn't done it, hasn't done any reports in a while, and, uh, I'm, uh.
And I realize that definitely Britton Estates, they're building houses like mad.
Yeah.
Probably all, just not built out at this point, phase one.
Yeah, what I, I have heard, and again, this is grapevine, is that my illustrious nightmare bridge has cost the town 20 grand, because the, you know, what I was worried about are those, um, oh, what do you call it?
Expansion.
Expand, thank you, the expansion thing had failed.
Expansion things.
Because the rubber had moved up, and when the plows went over it, they caught the metal.
Oh, no.
And bent it up, and had to be replaced, and to the tune of, approximately, and I was just like, I, yeah, again.
Because those have, those have done, well, from what I'm saying, those bridges are gonna be mass DOT.
Yeah.
Correct? They shouldn't cost the town anything.
Right.
I don't know if they've been accepted as mass DOT.
But they haven't been accepted by the town either.
That one has.
That one has, unfortunately.
Oh, that one has?
Yeah, it was part of the roadway acceptance.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but again, it's just, it's information, I'm not saying we have to do anything on it, I just, um, and then I guess Weston and Stampson might be coming out to take a look at the support structure.
So, is that for Bryce Lemon?
Britton L. States.
Do you want me to, do you, do you want me?
Bear Hill.
Bear Hill.
Oh, it's Bear Hill.
So, do you want me to check on the status of the acceptance of those bridges, and see if we can find out?
Well, I, I'm almost positive that they were, because that road went to the, on the other side of it.
It was accepted by the town, but at least it was our understanding, that once those bridges are accepted.
DOT was gonna do an inspection.
DOT.
Yeah.
Okay, so let, let me check on that.
That's just a Chris call, I think, John, it's just, Chris, what's going on, the board's just curious, because that was a big contention point with us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it could be something that Chris doesn't even know.
Correct, yeah.
Very true.
But he'd be the one to follow up on that.
Correct, yeah.
All right, let me, let me send him an email tomorrow, and I'll CC.
Especially if it's been, if he, if his guy's just paid 20 thou, and again, I don't know the number, just let's say, thousands to fix it, and really, mass DOT should be paying for that.
Yeah, but, see, I don't, I do not remember all of the details, obviously, we go round and round and.
Oh, yeah, my understanding was, once this is accepted, you gotta, and again, this is general, mass DOT has to come out and do an inspection, accept it, and that's where I thought it was gonna die, because it doesn't match up to their DOT standards, and they were gonna walk away, but we've never been told that, we don't, I don't.
That's right, that's right, we have.
I've never been seeing a report or anything.
I don't remember.
No, I, interesting, yeah, I don't, anyhow.
See where it goes.
Yeah, so let me follow up on that, see what that's to do.
That's between the Gary and the Joe transition phase.
Yeah.
So, I'll leave it at that. Oh, God, don't, don't get me wound up, you're gonna wind me up, I can see this.
Man is in a six-foot culvert, would have thought everything was needed there.
Yeah.
Exactly. Overkill?
Very.
It was.
It was mainly because of the height and the under, going under.
It would be like building the Golden Gate Bridge to get into Rutland Heights Hospital.
That'd be nice.
It's a nice drop.
That'd definitely make the, the property more appealing, I think.
Harmony Place would be digging that for the chain.
Speaking of that, while we're, I know Kevin mentioned it in his report, even though it wasn't approved by the planning board, that project is obviously moving forward, and although it took a few weeks, I'm happy to say that, you know, the 53G account had gotten really low, and they did get us a check last week to replenish that, so, they're good to continue, that should keep Kevin Quinn going out there for at least another few months, so, I'm happy to say that they've, they've gotten us that, and they, they're
And I, you can tell Kevin, I appreciate this coming into us, just to keep us in loop, I know this is HPDD and RDICs, it's where I'm at, like, bailiwick, but I'd like to know, just because.
More, more the roadways than.
Yeah, I don't care about the housing and the housing permits, I just wanna see where, I'm curious.
Well, and for people who might not realize that this was not approved by the planning board, I'm sure there are people out there who may think that the planning board approved this, at least if, if you gentlemen can be in the loop on this, and someone asks you a question, you can clarify that, but at least you have the information, as far as we're concerned.
Believe in the agreement, the roads were to be constructed to subdivision standard.
Correct, yes. Yes.
I believe Dave was on top of that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, that's that one.
We do have correspondence, as of today, again, not to discussion, but this is not[1735.85] We do have correspondence as of today, again, not to discussion, but this is not on the agenda, but this is pertinent to a discussion that we will have at the, the, um, on the agenda on the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Regarding this, uh, the subcommittee bylaw composition.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, Norman, I spoke about it on the phone today, and this might, this might require an action by the planning board to, to tweak this.
Yeah, yeah, I was reading this, and I'm going like, you no-good twenty-eight-year-old veterans. I only see two names on here that I know right off the top.
I was disappointed, you didn't, you didn't remember a, a specific meeting from nineteen ninety-six, come on.
Yeah.
Oh, this is actually a pretty good date, cuz five, two, three, nine days from that date, I said, hey, honey, will you marry me? She goes, sucker.
Are you saying you have mixed feelings about that date?
No, no, not at all, this is Wallyworld, so, uh, nothing can go wrong in Wallyworld in Orlando.
Okay, just looking at this first page, we sat right out with a motion to appoint Britton to the bylaw subcommittee.
So moved, second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Don't get sworn in, my young lad.
Yeah, will do.
I don't.
I, I would cover myself and just.
I, yeah, I suppose.
It's, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, no, not a bad idea, but I don't think any of us were.
No.
You may be the only.
I'll be the only official participant.
We were elected.
I'll give you the gavel, good for me.
But I wanna say, on the subject of the bylaw subcommittee, I, I attended the first meeting in a while on the seventeenth, and I gotta say, it was a very productive meeting. And, um, I really enjoyed the, the questions and the conversations, and I thought, it was one of the most productive meetings I've been a part of in a long, long time, so.
I do, I do just wanna say one thing, it's maybe a bad thing to say, but attendance at those meetings is not required. We certainly hope we will.
Right, yeah.
You know, honestly, because we need as good an input as we can get.
And naturally, being on the committee, I can keep him informed as far as what goes on at those meetings, and certainly being a member of the planning board.
What's the frequency again?
It's, it's.
I know, I'm trying to do every two weeks, and so next Wednesday, what I'm doing is I'm trying to do Wednesday at six-thirty every two weeks. Cuz the, the goal right now, and I, I guess, I'm, I'm out of, am I out of line, but.
Go ahead.
Is that, um, we promised the town a couple meetings ago that we were gonna try to get two, I'm sorry, three bylaws through. We've done two of them, the third one was like an industrial park to help out business owners as they're getting, that's a tough one. Cuz somebody with ninety-six, ninety-six acres, we're like, at the time, there was nothing. But, um, uh, when Capula's property came up, and now there's another person interested, um, Dave, I keep.
Putnam.
Putnam, thank you, and so we have a couple potential properties, and I think what we need to do is, we need to write the bylaw, and then we can fit the individual properties into that, but I think that is more of a fall town meeting, we're not gonna pull it off. So the second bylaw we really need to try to get through is the battery storage one, it's, it's more of a lighter lift. Um, and I'd really like to get that prepped and ready for May's town meeting if we can, which is gonna require the bylaw subcommittee.
That's much farther along.
Yes, and, and we've gotta have public hearings, so somewhere by early April or late March, we've gotta start, uh, putting the requirements for meet, for public hearings on, so we can get it ready for the May town meeting. So, that's my goal, is, is in this January and February, try to get that light lift out of the way.
And what I'd like to do is, I'm going on vacation from April, the second half of April, so those public hearings, I'd like to have in early April, so we can get those done before I go away, and so they're done for town meeting. Um, so, I'd like, I'd like to get those at the first meeting in April, uh, those public hearings.
And I like the fact that what we've done is, we've tried to incorporate it into as a, as a subsection of the solar bylaw. Because that's the intent with the tier one and tier two, is it's gonna be either handled with solar on people's roofs, as battery, um, support, or it'll be handled in like a solar field.
I thought you were on just three, tier three.
Tier three, I, I'm gonna stay away from, which is, which is the utility grade office substation, I don't think we're ready for that yet. And that's why I said then, when we were there, let's focus on one and two, and stay away from three, cuz I, I just think it's gonna be tougher for the town to absorb that, because it doesn't mean anything to them, we've got solar fields out there, so putting a battery generation facility there will be easy, and like, I've heard through, uh, the, the fire chief, there's probably fifteen to upwards of maybe um, seventeen houses that have already have a Tesla or a Generac battery system within them, but we didn't have any bylaw for that, so we need to get that in place to help future people if they wanna do that. So, that's why I just wanna stick with tier one and two. Three basically is a sub that's in the south, which is Paxton, not ours. And then the north one, which is a Rutland one, and I, I don't think we should focus on a, a tier three that only affects one section or one piece of the town at this point.
There's all the largest systems too.
Yeah, yeah, and they're.
They're run by the grid usually.
Yeah, that's gonna be grid-based, and they're the ones gonna be coming to us looking for a bylaw, and they aren't ready to do that yet.
Yeah. And you do know that, of course, the one on Central Tree Road, which is not north, but more southeast, is going to be in the, in the Muscat Park watershed.
Yes, so.
So no batteries, please.
Well, I, if, if the tech's gotten better, what I won't do is what Ocam went through, is with the cobalt stuff, that's not happening. I, I, that's why I said to Tom Corbett, I said, if you're coming with cobalt tech, you're gonna have a hard sell with me. Lithium ion, I'm probably a little bit more flexible too from the tech, but cobalt's not happening, that's, that's. Again, in my mind, it's as bad as radiation, so I don't really want it in my town. But again, it'll be up to the bylaw subcommittee, but anyhow, that's what we're wrapping, so that's, uh, those are the, the two heavy lifts that I wanna get to. And then once we get those, this summer, we can, uh, there's a couple agriculture, right, the farm, that we can take a look at down the road. And of course, anything else that comes up, there might be something else the town wants us to do. Or, like we said many moons ago within Rutland, is that if, if you wanna make a bylaw amendment or something, get it to the planning board, they'll refer it to the bylaw subcommittee and start action. So that's the procedure that should happen, and in this case, now that we got the planner, I work with the planner and the chairman to get it to the, to the, uh, planning board to be referred to the bylaw subcommittee. Is it?
Yep.
That's my speech, and I'm sticking to it. Although this, May fourteenth of ninety-six, what the hell do we do with this?
Hang on to it.
Yep, well.
Work at it and say, wow.
I like to put this on the thirteenth, because I've already got some amendments, I redlined at home.
Do you remember, Norm, where, where we held our meetings, those, those meetings?
I think that was upstairs.
Upstairs in the auditorium.
Oh, in the dance floor?
Room walled off.
Yep.
Walked floors and.
Well, if I'm looking at all four of these members, it was a thin crowd, I'm not going up on that floor, there, there right now. The big guy over here, he's not going up on that floor either, neither one of us.
I don't like shaky things.
Yeah, or this, the floor looks like.
Was made that way, so I wouldn't.
Yeah, okay. Unless that's chestnut or cherry, I'm not touching it.
Just, just kinda curious on this thing, because, uh, I don't believe we ever did get a member from the ZBA.
I don't think I went through the RDIC either.
Right, and if you, if you take a look, I think it's not the RDIC.
I thought it said RDIC, maybe I read that. The RDIC in ninety-six.
EAIDC.
Oh.
That's originally how it started. Okay, like, it was the Economic and Industrial Development. Somewhere, and I don't remember when, it got changed.
Circuit City.
My old man was on there when I changed it too.
Oh, so that's, ah, well, that's good knowledge.
It's useless.
No. But it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
This is the only tidbit from my library of useless information.
No, that actually.
Britton likes the reference to Radio Shack in here.
Tape recorder.
Tape recorder was not working.
We'll call Radio Shack. Okay.
It makes nineteen ninety-six seem like nineteen fifty-six.
Service engineer, and some of us were actually fully operational.
You know, the interesting thing, uh, the last line, Harry will have Judy check on the fees, the most limited plans for correct amounts.
Yeah.
When Judy left, has taken care of all of that, I don't know if we ever did get everything straightened out.
No.
It was.
They, they, they were finding checks that had just never been deposited, stuff all over.
In the filing cabinets all over the place.
Oh, my God, it was.
Wow.
We've come a long way.
Yeah. All right. Excellent.
Anyway, yeah, there's, there's no doubt that, uh, we need to.
Thank goodness.
Charge of the committee.
Thank goodness, uh, we have Quinn Engineering and not Colin.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, we've got Colin, but they're in Florida right now doing this, thanks Cle for that money. I remember he paid the fee, literally, and that next Saturday, they closed up and bailed. He was not a happy camper about that. When I say bailed, I mean literally.
Well, okay.
The only thing, has reported now?
Yeah, I was gonna ask back on four, um, have we had any movement with, and this might be to John, with George sending in anything with the HOA on Hilltop, or is that still?
We have movement on that, it's gonna be on the agenda for the thirteenth.
Okay.
To, to endorse the covenant and the, um, and the approved plans.
I meant the HOA.
Yeah, we, you know, town council's reviewed that.
Any chance we can get?
Well, again, it's gonna be on the agenda for the thirteenth, I wanted to get everything reviewed by town council, and it'll be on the agenda for the thirteenth.
Okay, all right, good enough.
Sure you don't wanna have a, turn it into a town road. They don't have to worry about that.
Well, I, I, I was talking to Cle about this, and homeowners associations, nine times out of ten end up being a headache for the town, because over time, as people move out, move in, all of a sudden, who's collecting the money? Are they really, are they really keeping up with the things they're supposed to be keeping up with, whether it be drainage, or roadways, landscaping, whatever? And then eventually, the town has to step in where, or they're asked to step in, and they can't, because it's a homeowners association, so I just think over time, homeowners associations end up being a headache.
All right. In this case, because everything was private, I was adamant about, um, it'd be tied to their deed. And it gives, and unfortunately, Joe was still.
So I don't, I don't wanna go too far with this.
Well, I wanna know, how is the town fixing the original problem of HOA?
What's the original problem?
Lenny Kingel. As a matter of fact, I started looking here, see if, if the subdivision, it said ten rods, so it is not, uh.
What subdivision is this?
I guess maybe we should put this as a question.
Burnhill Farm.
Island's a broil.
East and west, and north and south, and southwest and northeast.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know.
And to me, that because the land owner, owner and all that, if they did not maintain the trail, the town was supposed to go in and maintain the trail, then turn around and charge the homeowners.
Again, I don't wanna get into, I have.
But who owns the property?
Again, I don't, I don't know.
Is it the town?
Again, this is not part of this, so.
Do you remember if it was the town, the, with, on that CR, on that, between where this is and Devil's School?
I don't know.
Devil's School. It was a trail in the air that was supposed to be kept up.
It was never really made.
Part of it was.
It was barely.
Yeah.
I think we should, uh.
Yeah, I can.
But to me, it was never completed, and they, they kept on pulling away from it, pull away, don't, don't, don't look at it, don't do this, don't do that. No, I wanna know, what about the piece of property up there? Is it the town's responsibility for that piece of land, which I think it is, I thought it was turned over to the town?
How do we?
So how do you, you know? You don't just throw this under the bus and say, well, we'll let somebody else take care of it, no, you know.
Do.
Find out about it.
Well, I have no idea what I'm finding out about, that's why, but, but that's why I like emails, so I know what exactly to look for, cuz coming out of this conversation, I don't know what to be looking for, so.
We can talk a little bit about it some other time.
Yeah, cuz, Norman, what, to Dick's point, it's basically, we gotta give John some, where, where does he go with this? I mean, how did, how, you're gonna have to go back through the files, basically, the subdivision files, and look at the HOAs from the, um, what I'm looking for, the orders or the, the, I, I say orders of condition, but that's not right.
There probably were none.
Conditions of approval.
Conditions of approval, and then from there, it, it's, it would, should be recorded with the registry, I mean, it, it's gonna be some, it's a little bit of work involved with this.
And that's assuming that all that process was followed.
I, I've, I've got a hunch that.
It did not.
Find out that, yeah.
Lenny didn't, he grabbed the money and took the money.
And, but I would say, going forward, the last five to seven years, we're gonna be a lot better off than what we were with the other subdivision, cuz I think we were pretty adamant, these last five or seven years, we would not approve subdivisions without, and there's only been a few, without having the HOAs recorded. That whole, that whole mess in two thousand and eight, I can't say what happened, cuz I just don't remember, it's been seven, sixteen years ago? And there was a rush at that time to get everything in.
There's a lot of stuff that didn't happen.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I just, I feel for the people that have HOA on Bryce Lemon, that are now going to be in the near future, responsible for the ponds. Are they gonna take care of them, and that's why, Norm, from day one, I always thought it should have been the town's responsibility, period, and not the homeowners.
Which will take a change in the subdivision regs if that happens. That's what's gotta happen.
I, I know.
Dick, I don't disagree with you, but we gotta change the subdivision regs, we do that.
I just don't know where it's gonna go, and I hate to see the future for that.
Yeah.
That's all.
I, I somewhat agree with John, HOAs are.
They, they are, but at the same time, it's, it's difficult to say, well, the town should take care of that pond, when I don't know if the, if the town has any rights to take care of that body of water, that, it depends on the individual situation. The town may not have a legal right to maintain that.
Well, turn it over to DCR, because it goes into their watershed.
But again, it depends who controls that, we may not have a say in that, so it, it's, it's, it's a tough blanket statement to say that the, you know, the town should do this, it depends on the situation, the town may not have the legal right to have a voice in that.
It's possible.
And that's why I was adamant, and again, this is for later on, uh, it just, it's almost like, and I hate to say this, prenup, we gotta have an ironclad document, because we've been sort of, I don't want, we haven't been actuarial, but we've been asking for HOAs, and they've sort of been, and that's why this Hilltop, I was adamant.
And that's the problem, is HOAs are not enforceable by the town. The building commissioner cannot enforce the conditions of an HOA, it's a private document.
Correct.
But the courts can.
The town, the courts can, but the town cannot.
Yeah.
So if someone has an issue with the fact that some kind of drainage is not being, taking care of by an HOA, RDPW cannot step in and do that. It's not, it's not a town, it's not the town's responsibility.
The only thing Joe had said, John, where that happens, is if, if, say, like, a private road is HOA, and that drainage is coming out onto a town road, causing damage, then he said, I can step in.
Correct.
But un, other than that, I have no control over that private road.
Nope, you can take care of the problem and send the bill to them.
Same thing, for an example, is that private sewer system up on, uh, Palm Augusta and Britton Hill.
That, that's.
He has no control over that.
Yeah.
And he, and, but now Joe stepped in when he was here and helped out, and paid, and the town paid for it, but legally, the town has no authority to do anything with that private system.
You know, you, you realize that they're using these E-one pumps from my road, and they are pumping, I'm gonna say probably an elevation of two hundred feet up,
Yep.
up to the top of the hill, through multiple parcels of the land.
Yep. And across Palm Augusta, because they pick up those four pieces of property, or five next to me.
That's correct.
Yeah.
They come underneath the road to go to, to a private sewer system. And there, there's two leavers out there going, you're covering my stuff too.
Anyway, just, uh, on one of your bullets on Forest Drive Extension, I've mentioned this to John, uh, considering we've had this whole flap about, you know, the covenants and all this kinda thing, and I am ninety-nine point nine percent sure we have not received a covenant on Forest Drive. We haven't.
I can't find one in the file, so.
You gotta check on.
Yeah, I gotta check, I gotta check on that.
Wow.
With that. Town Planner Report.
What's that?
Oh, nevermind, check.
Oh, yeah. The only thing I have is, I encourage anyone to stop by and check out the office, it looks drastically different from three months ago.
It does.
Um, with the two new desks in the corner and the, the meeting table, so it looks a lot more open. Uses, utilizes space a lot better, so, I mean, anyone who wants to stop by and chat or check it out, it's, I think it's a lot more welcoming.
Looked nice this morning at seven o'clock.
And also they patched the hole in the roof.
I, I cannot, I can neither confirm nor deny that, I don't know.
Okay, they were, they were working on it.
Well, um, my, my desk is now. Well, um, my, my desk is now out of the way of the water feature as we're referring to it.
And he can, and he can see him coming at him from.
That's right, no one can sneak up on me now. That's another, another benefit, so, no, it looks, I appreciate the board allowing me to purchase the, uh, the new desk, and I thank the Conservation Commission for their contribution to the Conservation Agents Desk, they have a nice new desk to come into when we hire somebody new.
When they get someone, yeah.
That's it.
That's it for you?
Yeah.
I'm gonna put this under other. I think it was John. Had a very, very brief discussion on, maybe it was Austin. Do you want to include an open session in our agendas?
A public comment item on the agenda.
Yes, from now, at the beginning.
Most definitely.
There's two, well, I, I'm too loud.
So.
You know, it's, it's one of these things, you know, select board does, I don't know if any of the other boards.
So, in my experience, the select board is the only board that usually has a public comment, because obviously Good and Welfare, I know the town of Blackstone has Public Good and Welfare, where people could come in and talk about, in, in Blackstone, they have a, a solar array that's causing drainage issues for homes and things like that, with the recent storms and things like that. I don't know that I've seen a planning board do it, doesn't mean that they shouldn't. The one thing I would caution is, in doing that, um, we gotta be diligent, because, um, I don't want, I wouldn't want people taking advantage of that to come in and basically use this as a forum to vent about random things or agenda items that aren't on the agenda. Talk about something outside of a public hearing. I think that's the one, that's the one risk, is, uh, potential open meeting law violations. So that's, that, that would be my only caution, is we're gonna have to be diligent about, about basically making sure that what gets discussed at public comment does not put the board in a bad position with other, with other things.
But again, wouldn't it be nice if we did have people come in here to discuss a few things once in a while, and maybe get involved with the planning board?
What, what I think, Norm, I keep going back to is the reason I say yes, is what happened at Bryce Lemon with that, um, water issue that you and I got involved in. That was a great, the public came in, mentioned there's a problem, we went over, looked at it, 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 it really wasn't affecting the road. But we were able to talk with Clea and go, you need to fix this, because it's flooding out.
That's, that's a good point.
So in that point, I liked the public comment where they got involved and got us involved, and we really couldn't do anything from a legal standpoint, but we could tell the developer, listen, this could get worse. It's coming off a eighty-foot, or eight, yeah, about an eighty, seventy, eighty-foot bank, and it's just coming down like a waterfall.
I, in Framingham, I was asked to go talk to the manager at Lowe's because they weren't collecting their carriages quickly enough. That is the type of thing I'm talking about.
I don't anticipate that at all.
I guess the, you know, the biggest reason that I think I'm for it, and maybe I'm just a little bit paranoid, but you know, there's certainly there are some people, at least in this town, that, that are thinking, oh, yeah, planning board, that's the good old guys, doing all this stuff behind closed doors and blah, blah, blah.
Come in and see what we do.
You know?
You got questions?
Public information session.
Yep.
You know?
I think we should include it at the beginning like the select board does, and then, um, when people are here, please ask questions. You've seen, the agenda's posted, so if you have any questions on the agenda, bring it up.
And my advice would be, maybe we put a time limitation on that, so it doesn't potentially hijack the entire meeting.
Fifteen minutes?
Yeah, yeah, it's not a bad idea, and it's not a public hearing, so if it ends sooner, we can get into the regular agendas.
Yep.
I'm sorry, you're out of line.
We do not recognize the, uh, Senator from, uh, the other side of Brooklyn.
For your information, Conservation Commission has public comment at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
So somebody who wants to speak has to sit through basically the whole meeting to get there, and.
That's not a bad idea.
Come in way.
Sometimes.
I've seen it both ways.
Yeah. We, we have had issues that come up, that frequently have no jurisdiction to the Conservation Commission, but we give the people the time to, to speak and to raise their issue and to know that they are heard, and that is frequently enough for some people. We have also been lectured for an hour on end about the wet, uh, the Wetlands Protection Act and all the regulations by a particular person, but, uh, just saying, hey, you know, this is all your jurisdiction, we say. Yeah, we know, we understand our jurisdiction, but he felt unnecessary to read to us anyway. Things happen, and there does need to be some level of control as much as you reasonably can.
Gavels on the other side.
But the information that we collect in these not very frequent public comments are certainly interesting to us.
Pete, I use your board and the planning board, as I've sat in both of them, and if it doesn't pertain to your, to the conservation or to the planning board, a lot of times, because of the knowledge base of the boards, that, that public reference to where to go is a valuable tool.
You can direct them to, to where they should go.
And I think that's an advantage as a relationship builder for some of the boards and the town, that's my opinion. I know we've done it, and I've seen you guys do it too, reference, well, we don't really have that, you gotta talk to the building inspector about it. And it gets people going in the right direction instead of going, I mean, not a lot of people are, they're new to town, they don't understand town government, they're gonna learn, hopefully, that'll be comments in here, we'll talk about on the thirteenth. Is that some training and stuff like that will become available and have sessions that can teach people and educate them, get some of the young people involved. I need to say that now, because I'm getting old and gray too. But yeah, that was one of the reasons I was really for the public session, because not only the, some of the boards can help with individuals, but you can get some of the comments. To John's point, it has gotten out of control sometimes, and that's where the, the chairman can say, that's it, we're done.
Well, I think putting a time limit on it is helpful, because certainly when we have public hearings, the public has a chance to speak during those. So this is just an additional, additional measure, and I don't want people to think, oh, now I can go back and comment additionally on the public hearing that just held after it's, after it's continued, and that's, that's not what that's for, so, um, again, it, it, it's gonna be a new thing if it's implemented, so it'd be a learning curve, but I think putting a time limit on it at the beginning especially would be, not be a bad idea.
I also think you need to have, if I may, have ground rules and publish them. So, for example, that, that chair has the ability to cut off public comment, not just for time, but for content.
Leah's on the line. Leah, can, can I ask you, you guys on the, on the select board, if I remember right, I've sat at a meeting where you've had like a, a little spiel of what your expert, or what the rules of conduct is, is that correct? Am I, do I remember that right?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Is there any chance? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do have, um, uh, like, uh, rules of public decorum, kind of, for any public, um, meeting. Um, my only caution is, um, there's been a few case laws recently that have spoken to the, um, First Amendment rights of public comment, so we just need to, to double check, but it's basically just kind of, we're gonna be civil and try to give everyone an opportunity to be heard. I can find the document and make sure that it's meets case law standards and everything.
But it also, like I said, some of the things I've been hearing about the First Amendment individuals who come to town halls, um, some of the, some of the recent, um, case law is, Leah, quite frankly, a little bit concerning as a town employee, because it seems like people are being empowered more and more to be confrontational and aggressive and disrespectful, and it seems like as a public official, we're, we're not, we're not, we're getting less and less, given less and less ability to actually push back or stand up for ourselves, and it's not, it's not an issue anyone here can do anything about, that's just something that, as, as someone who's been doing this for, it's, it's becoming a concern. Because I feel like we're gonna cross the line at some point, where something's gonna happen at a town hall or at a public meeting.
We've already had that happen at one of, I remember, because I was on the board, we had an individual that decided he wanted to curse up and we felt threatened, and we called, I forget which chief, I forget which. Yeah, came over and removed the individual from the, uh, it was a public informational meeting, or maybe it was like public hearing, I can't remember, but it was over in, in the Blair Room.
Yeah.
And, uh, the gentleman, he's passed away now, but we had him removed.
That was Wolfman, wasn't it? That was Wolfman.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I was trying, we had him removed.
That was his end, isn't it?
Because of that individual, John, so.
Yeah.
I still think that's I, I, I'm gonna hit that number if, if I feel threatened, and, uh, I need, I mean, I, but when I was with Leah, I wanted to get that, so we could possibly make sure we're on the same page as the select board and we're consistent among boards.
I think that document is the same one that I think Austin sent to me.
Okay.
Just over our recent thing, he said, I'm pretty sure he sent it to you too.
Yeah, so, um, I think, Britain, you made a comment that you've seen, you've seen someone.
I've seen it, yeah, I've seen it through ZBA's, planning boards, where in general, I, I've seen it both ways at the beginning. And I've seen it at the end. Um, most of the time, when there has been other issues and the public is, you know, there's an issue, and they bring it up, the, usually the chairman has to sort of set like, okay, how many of you here are for this issue? And then understand, is there any, okay, is there anybody that's going, that needs to say anything different, that it, that it's gotta be managed, it's gotta be controlled. If it's just fifteen minutes, the first person who's really fired up is gonna take the first fifteen minutes. So it's one of those things that, and I've seen, you know, really good chairman, they're, they're very strong and they control the situation, but, um, I've also seen it go off the rails. And it really drives the meeting, and then they're not getting to the agenda until an hour later.
Yeah. And, 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 like you said.
And that's not fair to the applicants.
That's not fair to the applicants and the other, other people, other butters there on that public hearing.
Which is something to consider, there does need to be a control.
Yeah, I didn't like this one.
Yeah, even agenda first and then.
Yeah, I, I mean, Peter, I think, I think, oh, Peter left, um, I, I don't think that's a bad idea, especially if it's, if it's a light agenda like this, it's not, you know?
Yeah, we'll get to it.
In the interest of having people see how the board operates, they would see how the board operates.
Yeah.
And then they can ask, they can ask, they can make their comments at the end.
All right.
We've got a consensus that it should be at the end of the meeting.
I'm fine with the end of the meeting, I don't.
I would, yeah.
And at the, at, at least initially, um, it, does the board want to put like a fifteen-minute time limit on the agenda to start out?
That long? At the end of the meeting? Why don't we leave it up to, to Maker, she had young kids to go home to? So it's five minutes, two minutes?
I mean.
Hey, I have an hour drive home, come on.
Don't we have a five-minute time on?
Town meeting.
The town meeting, yeah.
Oh, well, five, five minutes, you can, you can, you can read half of Gone with the Wind to the board in five minutes, no, just kidding, but no, um, how about ten minutes? To start out, and we can also, we can always extend it. It, it's not, it's not something that's a legally binding thing.
I'm okay with.
It's just to kind of set the parameters.
Yeah.
I'm okay with, yeah, and, I, I mean, I think it should be the chairman's discretion if, if we set a time limit where.
If this is an accessory to continue.
Right, is it, okay, I'm hearing the same thing over and over again, do we need to talk forty-five minutes about it, or have we, you know, do we have the information we need?
Yeah.
It, it, it could also be something where something comes up where it's better, where if they set up a time to come in and meet with me, if there's an issue that needs to be looked into, or I don't have the information there and I need to look it up on certain properties, so that may come up too, where we understand the comment, but it's probably better if they come in to, to, to talk to me about something.
And, and Norm has the ability, which I've seen bef, in fact, I've saw the RDIC when Dick and I have been on there, is that, you know, um, you're out of order, this is your one gavel, at the second gavel, you're being removed from the meeting, that's the end of the discussion. If it goes that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the extreme side of it, and just don't ever get there, but that is an option that can be handled.
That was like my father growing up, he had a very long fuse, but you didn't want to get to the end of it.
I'm okay.
Kind of me, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm very, I'm very patient, but, wish me just to that point.
And we don't want to. That's, that's the gentleman Scottish side of me.
I have told people literally to shut up.
Yeah, I'm okay putting it towards the end of the meeting, I think that's a general consensus.
And again, it doesn't have to be a hard and fast ten minutes, if it's something that needs to be talked about more.
Yeah.
The board can allow it to.
Again, and, and I think it's a discretion of the chairman. It's like, hey, we're like.
Per item or per person?
No, just overall, public comments over.
Get it within ten minutes.
Because probably nine times out of ten.
It's quick.
At most means you're not gonna have anyone here to give a public comment, it, it's for those times once in a while where somebody feels like they want to come in and address something.
I'd be surprised if once in six months we get it.
Yes, yes. It's, it's a cur, it's a courtesy.
And, and sometimes like during the pre-elections, they'll come in because they want to learn about the planning board, see if they want to be involved or run.
True.
So.
So, no, so, uh, all right, sounds like a good plan. So starting at the next agenda, we'll.
I would just tell, I have another meeting.
Okay. Well, I think we're.
So will that be on the, you'll have a block for the agenda for a public comment?
No, we'll just, uh, have an additional item on the agenda.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, there'll be another bullet point.
Yeah, there'll be another bullet point somewhere down here.
Public comment, and then so on a notification that will go out for public mailings.
Right after others.
So that'll need to be on the next one, right, yeah, okay, just want to make sure we're.
And, I mean, if, if Norm, if Norm wants to make, um, make, make a statement at the next agenda, pointing out to people that from, you know, we have it on tonight's agenda, from this point going forward, we'll have it, might be good to point that out to people.
Sort of a double town.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Or something else.
Curious. Else that we need to talk about, so we talked about this.
Excellent.
Any discussion?
Hi.
Hey, Dick, you're released.
Thank you.